I've started it, so...
Yeah, it takes a long time to go on.
The... Oh, it's... So, you can hear me good? Okay. Oh, there now it shows that?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. And where's what?
You usually have to go get me.
What's that? Yeah, he's, he's... I think he was reading a novel, maybe. Let's hope it wasn't War and Peace or something wrong.
Morning. Let's call this meeting to order. Welcome to the January 12th meeting for the Board of Supervisors. Please join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start off with Board of Supervisors Matters. Supervisor Vanderpool.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few things I wanted to go over this morning are several events that are coming up this week. We will be having, I don't know if it's Government 108 or Government 109, whatever the number is, but it's our evening session for special district elected board members to really learn about a lot of the things that they don't get the opportunity or those districts can't afford them the opportunity to learn and be trained for when they first take office. So, I want to thank our county council's office and thank local government attorneys that volunteer their time to help answer questions and provide this training. It's very helpful for all of the attendees and I will be saying a welcoming speech at that event. The computer giveaway will be taking place this week that the local Rotary Clubs and our surplus store and the county and the Office of Education all partner and work together to provide computers at a discounted rate to youth who are identified throughout the county as being successful students that are working very, very hard and would benefit from the use of a computer. Look forward to participating in that. Also, I have a board retreat for Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Central California. They've really done a good job of expanding their presence here in Tulare County. I know they've got a very successful program up in Supervisor Worley's District and Dinuba. And they also have a program in Tulare as well that's doing very well. Since we're not, and the reason I'm going over these events that are a little ways off is the fact we don't have a meeting next week. We are dark. And another event is the VIEW Partnership, which is a Celebrate the Success Luncheon, which will take place next Thursday. That's a great event where various governmental entities are recognized from this area for their contribution to saving energy and being efficient using the most up, up in front technologies to benefit not only themselves but their constituents as well. And that's always been a great event and I enjoy attending. The Tulare Chamber will be having their awards banquet on Friday, next Friday, the 22nd. Congrats to all the winners of those various awards for all their contributions in Tulare. And then the Tipton Community will be having their awards banquet next Saturday at 5:30. And the only thing I can guarantee about that is that there will be some, some good laughs because I know who the emcee's gonna be, so, it's me. Didn't even get a laugh on that one, so maybe, maybe I'm off to a tough start, so hopefully, hopefully it'll go well.
Get used to it.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Doesn't last too long.
Well, I, I've just noticed that simple things, you know, really impress me. We're actually doing our Board of Supervisor Matters now by age. We're starting with the youngest and moving down through the oldest. And I just need to say it feels great to be on this end of, of the ages. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting for the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Not a new business, but a expanding business here in town providing services for Hispanic-speaking tax customers. So, very well attended. Tomorrow, I have a retirement board meeting. Thursday, I will be in Sacramento with the CalCog, meeting the State Association for Transportation at a conference. And then this coming Monday, on the 25th, again, since we're not having a meeting for a while, the Tulare County Association of Governments meeting is going to be held in Lindsay. And then I would like to give a minute of my time, Mr. Chair, over to Allison Pierce, who will talk about an event starting here in my district tomorrow night, but will go countywide, the Urban Art Tour.
Good morning, Supervisors. I, Allison Pierce, Program Administrator for Step Up, wanted to share with you information. We will be kicking off the Urban Art Tour tomorrow in Visalia. And it will make its way through the county, stopping at Dinuba, Ivanhoe, Woodlake, Exeter, Lindsay, Strathmore, Porterville, Early Mart, Tulare, Pixly, Tipton, and with the final stop at Government Plaza. We've added this year, Tipton, and we're excited about stopping there this year, also in Ivanhoe. Also wanted to let you know, these pieces were originally eight feet by eight feet. We condensed them down for logistics speaking and to be able to get it to the various stops throughout the county. And we're excited about showing off to the county's youth how spray paint can be used in positive ways. And so, we encourage you to come out and visit the sites and you have the calendar before you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Allison. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, three of our supervisors were at the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Literacy Center in downtown Visalia at their library there. It was a nice event. And I was on a speaking tour, it seemed like last Thursday. I spoke to the Woodlake Rotary Club at lunch and the Dinuba Lions Club in the evening. And then Friday, you know, I explained to the folks, I said, you know, it's interesting to go back about three or four years and, and our board really had very little to do with water, other than the Water Commission, which was a significant thing. But since then, our lives, because of the drought, have kind of revolved around water. And so, my Friday was spent at two different meetings. One was at the Kings River Conservation District concerning the Sustainable Groundwater Act as it applies to the Kings River Basin, which affects quite a bit of Tulare County. And then in the afternoon, the JPA, which Tulare County is a part with Merced, Madera, Fresno, and Kings, the goal of which is to try to acquire funding from the water bond, the big prize being if we could build a dam at Temperance Flat. And the trains were all in alignment and I was chaired, determined to be the chairman of it. So, a new, a new project for, for me and obviously for Tulare County. And hopefully, we will be successful at getting some of those dollars spent that will benefit us and our water supply issues into the future. Tonight, I'll be at the Dinuba City Chambers lobbying for water from the city that will be used in our tank program in northern part of the county. We have a shortage of water in that area. And so, we're now trucking water from great distances to the tanks that are located in the northern part of our county. And there will also be a folks meeting at the Arosi Water Board asking for an extension of the, they had given us, we had been buying water from them and they decided to terminate that contract, so we're gonna try to reinstall that, reinstate that contract. And then today's action, we will be taking action to purchase a piece of property in Monson, where we will be drilling a well in short order. And that will provide, help us to provide some of our water needs in North County. So, the, the drought, notwithstanding the great storms we're having so far, the drought, of course, continues on. It will be sometime before we have groundwater back under control. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Last Friday, I took a drive up to Three Rivers and the Quea River is still running, in my opinion, is a trickle. It just shows you how dry we were up in the mountains. That with all the rain we've had, you would think the river would be kind of roaring a little bit, but it's not. So, hopefully, things will continue to improve. I attended Chief Garcia's retirement for a very brief period of time because I had a meeting in Fresno and gave our regards on behalf of Supervisor Worley and myself. At the Water Commission this, yesterday, we had a discussion about the well ordinance, the construction of new wells. And we'll be going to public hearings of outreach in a relatively short period of time. And we'll get that scheduled out. The other issue that came up, that we finally had a meeting between the Water Commission and the Ag Advisory Committee about well permitting, what we're gonna allow on a permitting basis. So, those meetings had just started and we expect to report back from the two committees in the next couple of months. This week, we're gonna start with construction on the Plainview Community Park. And it's one of the first community parks that we've been able to help construct in many years. And I'm looking forward to the completion of that park, hopefully by April. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Last Friday, we had an opportunity to meet with Kevin McCarthy in Porterville. And of course, the ongoing matter that I keep pressing for is to pressure the Corps to, in their last investigation with the overtopping issue with Success Dam, is to try to take that project, the overtopping project and the widening of the spillway and merge it with our pool enlargement program so that we can move this thing forward. We've got the dam back to capacity at 82.5, but we'd like to see that pool raised to 110,000 acre feet, especially with, we need all the water we can get because of the weather patterns that we've been getting through here. Success Dam already has surpassed last year's total. In fact, they're releasing 200-second feet down the river. It's kind of good to see water flowing again in the Tulia River. It's clear out past Road 208 now, 10,000, over 10,000 acre feet. They need to draw that pool down approximately to 8,000 acre feet as we go through this flood time of year. And hopefully, you know, we can see from 1966 that that pool can fill up within 36 hours and run over the spillway. And that's what happened in 1966. It actually filled up in 36 hours and was running over the spillway. So, hopefully, we're gonna get that project moved forward. Kevin said he's, he's kind of in a tussle with them too because we've got Lake Isabella, who has got the same problem, except they've got a real seepage problem there and they're having to do some remediation and dam replacement. So, hopefully, we're gonna get that project moved forward. That'll be on our platform when we go to Washington DC in April. Been looking at the Deer Creek Bridge. I go out there at least once a week. That project's moving forward. To, to look at that bridge, it's 400 feet long. Now, it's, it's long. It's not real high, but the river spans out there. And it, Deer Creek sometimes can be pretty deep. I mean, it washed that whole road away and it dropped off six or seven feet. The road just completely gone. It took pipe corral. It took everything. So, with this bridge, this is gonna fix that problem permanently. Hopefully, we'll not have to revisit it. I can remember when 248 didn't have a bridge on it, growing up in Terabilla. So, this is a project that's been much needed for that area. The old culverts in the ground with asphalt over them doesn't last. But this new bridge is gonna cure that problem for good. This weekend, we got the big Sierra Winter Classic Cattle Show in Porterville at the fairgrounds. That brings people from all over the state into Porterville. It's a steer and heifer show and it'll start Friday and run through Sunday. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I forgot something. I like to put someone on the spot today. Last week, we announced our new fire chief for Tulare County. And Mr. Charlie Norman is in the back of the room. If you haven't seen him before or know what he looks like, that's our new fire chief of Tulare County.
Charlie, would you like to say a few words? If you'd like to say a few words, come on up. I don't want to put you on the spot, but, but you're, you know, in the position you're in, you're probably gonna be on the spot.
Did you get a hold of Mike last night, Charlie?
I didn't.
Oh, you didn't?
I finally went home at 8:30 and I called...
He called me on my personal cellphone, so that kind of like took me off guard a little bit, so.
And so, anyway, I will talk to you later today. First of all, thank you very much. Again, it's not a media line. I am very humbled and honored to be the next county fire chief. I appreciate the confidence that you have in me. And as I leave the office at 8:30 last night, I, I'm sure I will work to gain your confidence. It's always in perspective, putting things in the eyes of your children, in the eyes of your parents. I talked to my 4.5 GPA youngest child about this. And he said, "So, Dad, what does this change the responsibility?" So, you know, "What's your area?" I said, "Well, remember when we were in Balch Park a couple of weekends ago, all the way up there?" And he said, "Remember when we were passing through Dinuba the other day, all the way over there?" And he said, "Wow." He said, "That's a really big area." And he Googles it and says, "Well, that's, you know, almost 5,000 square miles." He said, "Were you gonna be able to make it to all the offices then during the day?" So, logistically, he has me squared away. And I think part of that is the support system that you have given me, as well as the support system I have from my family, as well as the support of the Tulare County firefighters. Look forward to big things and my phone's always on. I'm always here. And I think accessibility of the community is what we're all about. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. We have all the confidence in the world for you because it was unanimous decision to choose you. So, thank you so much.
Sincerely appreciate it.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak to the board on issues but not on our agenda, please come forward.
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Paul Evenzant. I live at 5325 West Prospect Court in Visalia. I am the district director for Senator Andy Viedak. I cover four counties, so Fire Chief, I can give you some tips on making it from South Fresno to Arvin, Lamont in a day. I'm here today. I've sent you the flyer, but I want you to be aware of an event we're having. The Senator's, you know, one of his platforms is job creation. And this is our second annual Career Expo and Job Fair at Tachi Palace in Lemoore. What makes it different is that all booths have to have current job openings. They can't set up a booth and collect resumes. So, people flock to this event because they know their, their odds of getting a job. So, we're trying to connect people that need talent and people that need a job. We have people coming from Riverside, Los Angeles. I've got a couple of booths from Tulare County. I don't have any fire booths if you're hiring. But I wanted to make aware of it. If you have current job openings, you can call me in about 30 minutes, 585-7161. Or I'll leave some flyers if anybody here has job openings and would like to attend. I noticed the Board of Supervisors is looking for interns. More than happy to provide you a booth if you'd like to send somebody over to represent Tulare County Board of Supervisors to collect resumes for interns. So, I'll make that offer to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Thanks for the announcement, Paul. I did have it on my email and I was gonna announce it next week because that's right before the event. But you took my thunder, so good job.
Morning.
Good morning, Chairman Ennis, members of the board. My name is Jim Smith. I'm the Director of Visalia for California Water Service. And I've been with the company for over 41 years and my wife and I just relocated here about a month ago. Beautiful area. I would've been here sooner, but you probably read in the papers that we have some issues going on right now. And I've been quite busy, but I'm happy to report that we are working closely with the city right now. And I strongly believe we are showing some progress. So, I'm basically here today just to introduce myself and to let you know that if you need any information from CalWater or myself, feel free to call me anytime. It's, it's nice to be in this area. We, we relocated from Hawaii to come to Visalia. But I'm happy. It's a beautiful area too, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before, Mr. Smith, before you leave, I just wanted to comment thanks to your company for their willingness to help us when we, in this drought situation where we've had people who were able to be connected to your system who had wells go out. They were very, very rested and it's very helpful to get that accomplished and most appreciated. And I thought your coat looked pretty new and now I understand why.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you might, you might leave us some cards too.
I, I will. I'll do that.
Okay, do that. And so, we'll know who to get a hold of if we need to talk to you. Appreciate that. Appreciate you coming forward. Anybody else wanting to speak under public comment? Seeing none, let's move on to the consent calendar. Item 19 has been pulled to a later date. Anybody else having anything on there that they'd like to?
Real quick, just a quick question on item number four. If we could, if I could just ask a question of, maybe Mr. Spot could answer that for me. This item has to do with business licenses. And I just wanted to make sure that this is not a movement moving forward to bring business licenses as a concept back to this board as that was shut down a few years ago. If this is just some fine tuning around those that do have to have licenses to operate, I'm okay with it. But I want, I wanted to make sure it's not the whole concept coming back again.
That's my understanding. Does the treasurer, tax collector, auditor, voter at large want to say anything?
It's the way I read it too, but I want to make sure.
This was just to update the fee schedules and make it a little clearer. Nothing new.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else?
While we're talking about business licenses, it's come to my attention that in Three Rivers, we have a lot of investors coming in, buying homes and renting them out. So, I don't know if that's gonna come under licensing or...
It'd come under TOT, wouldn't it?
But TOT, definitely.
That would come under the transient occupancy tax ordinance. And we have been very successful in getting the new ones lately. I think we have 50 new ones that we're collecting from, just from going on the internet and catching them advertising and stuff. So, yes, we're being very active in that area lately. So, you're probably gonna get some complaints pretty soon. We've got a couple we're going to, that are in the process and they're appealing and stuff, but they don't like the appeal now very much.
Mr. Chairman, on that matter, like, I know we're renting a place over in Cayucas and it's through Air, A or, what do you call it?
Airbnb?
Yes, thank you. And, and there, it's just an automatic, or they, you know, they're charging and then we're paying the TOT over there. So, is that part of, of the area, Airbnb, as far as the way they operate? Does the people who operate to that automatically pay into the, to the transient occupancy tax?
I'll refer to council on that. There's a lawsuit going on.
I was gonna say, there's litigation going on with the city and county of San Francisco on the application of laws that have been placed in a long time to what's called the sharing economy. And it's not completely clear right now what, what you can charge to a, an organization such as Airbnb.
Well, I don't think it would be through the organization because they're, they're just a facilitator. But the idea would be that, you know, what I'm wondering is if the people who sign up to be part of that, if part of that means that they will, will receive and, and pay the, pay the tax.
And Airbnb contends that since they are just a facilitator, that's not their problem. And they have no obligation to identify it or require it to be collected or anything else, even though they do, they are the pass-through or whatever for the collection of, of the rental. I've used Airbnb in Europe and they're a great company. And I know that they're active in this area because of the Sequoias. Right now, the position generally of all governmental entities is if it's a rental, it's, TOT applies. There may be something that comes down the pike that says differently.
There is another company out there that we are collecting from though. It's VN something. And there are several new ones from that company and they are paying once we get a hold of them and shake them around a little bit and say, "Hey, we're here. You are supposed to pay." And so, they're doing it. But we're getting a little bit more money. It's slow, but it's sure.
Thank you, Rita.
Airbnb's position is that, again, they're a facilitator, so it's the obligation of the renter to pay it. They don't want to have the responsibility for collecting it and handing it over to a governmental entity. And frankly, it would increase the cost when you're looking at it. And it would increase the cost depending on where you were looking. TOT in San Francisco is way higher than it is here, Monterey, you know.
Not cheap in San Luis Obispo County either, I can tell you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else on the consent calendar that these people?
With approval, Mr. Chairman, of the, of the balance of the consent calendar.
Okay.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes is unanimous. Thank you. Move on to our untimed item, consummating the purchase of real property in Monson. Mr. Newby.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, CAO and county council. I am Robert Newby, property manager and general services. The matter before the board is to accept public comment and to consummate the purchase of property, real property for a municipal well site in Monson, a rural community at the southeast corner of Avenue 388 and Road 104, located approximately eight miles north of Visalia. The purchase price for the property is $35,000. On December 15th, the board adopted a resolution setting this date as the date to accept public comment regarding the property purchased. And at this meeting, the board authorized publication of a notice of intent to purchase real property. This property, whose address is 307, excuse me, 10736 Simpson Drive, is .81 acres in size and is part of a larger parcel belonging to Adrian Cabrera and Sandra S. Narrows. In early 2015, property management was asked to acquire a site for a municipal well in Monson by RMA and the CAO's office due to numerous well failures in the Monson community. The county has applied for an emergency drought relief grant from the USDA, Department of Water Resources, and the State Water Board to construct a well and distribution system. Self-help enterprises helped canvass the area and found potential sites, with the current site before the board being the best location due to adjacent proximity to the community. RMA planning prepared a general plan referral regarding the site's conformity to the general plan for this intended use. RMA further approved a sequent notice of exemption that upon board approval of today's action will be filed with the county clerk recorder. The board is also being requested to approve a budget adjustment within the RMA budget to move funds to budget lines to provide for the purchase price, escrow cost, and property management staff time. The property is within a Williams-Senat contract for which a notice of non-renewal has been filed. Since the amount of time for complete removal of the contract has not elapsed, staff has requested that the board find that, one, the location of the property purchase is not based primarily on a consideration of the lower cost of acquiring land in an ag reserve. And, two, there are no other land within, lands within or outside... two, there are no other land within, lands within or outside the ag reserve that is reasonably feasible as a site for the intended purpose. This concludes the presentation of the item. I can answer any questions related to the property acquisition, and RMA is here and available to answer any questions regarding the grants and water well improvements and distribution construction.
Any questions? Supervisor Cox?
Couple. When we're applying for these grants, will we be reimbursed for the cost of this land that we're purchasing?
Yeah, that's, that's the intent.
That's part of the grant?
Right.
And then, is it our intent that we're going to own this potentially new well? The county will own it?
The county will own it? I think there are some other plans for possible adding it to another community water system.
My concern is that we, we own another system, which I don't want to own, personally don't want to own another system, because our system's out there running in the red, and we're, you know, we're using taxpayer, general fund money to support those things. So, if, that's really all I want to know. Are we plan, are we going to own this water system, or is it going to be put in someone else's system that we don't own it? Or we're just acting as a facilitator?
We're currently acting as a facilitator. We're working with the Sultana CSD in order for them to, in a reasonable time, pick this up as an extraterritorial jurisdiction, and then, when other projects are complete, including an interconnect between the systems, it'll incorporate them even further into the Sultana CSD.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with the speaker, identify himself first.
My name's Ross Miller. I'm from RMA. I'm an engineer for.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, if I may say, we're going to be bringing forward a comprehensive report with regard to zones of benefit, et cetera, and the whole notion of government structure is on the table, and I can assure you that our intent is not to repeat the past.
Thank you. Thanks, Ross. That's it.
Back to the board for, ask for public comment. Any public comment on this?
Good morning, members of the board. Maria Herrera with Self-Help Enterprises, eight-four-four-five LON Court Street here in Visalia. Today's a really good day. I'm very happy to be before the board, along with Munson residents who have been working on this project since two thousand and eight. It's a happy day, because we're seeing real progress. Today is a big milestone, and we're here to urge the board to continue on this path of supporting the community of Munson. We also want to take brief moments to thank Supervisor Wordley for your leadership. I know that it's not easy to champion these types of projects, especially given the past, but we really appreciate your willingness to lead and get the support of your fellow colleagues. I also want to thank staff. I know staff have spent a lot of hours working on this project, and Denise England as well, who I'm not sure, I didn't see her in the audience, also want to take time to personally thank her. Again, just want to urge you to move forward. I did want to let Supervisor Cox know that on January twenty-seventh, we will be kicking off the LEFA project in Munson, which will deal with the governance structure. So, the county has received funding to do that, and Self-Help Enterprises will be initiating the conversations with the residents of Munson and Sultana to establish, as was mentioned earlier, either a full annexation by the Sultana CSD or an extraterritorial services. And unfortunately, Michael Prado could not be here today. He's in the hospital with his father, but he wanted to be here to reassure the board that the Sultana CSD is still interested in taking on Munson. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, folks, some of them lost their voice, but they just wanted to stand here in solidarity to let the board know that they are still in support of this project. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just say thanks to the members of Munson being here today. They represent a significant portion of our community there.
That's the whole community.
Not the largest community in the county, but very significant. And this is a, to speak to Supervisor Cox's concern, this is a concern that is shared by all board members, of how do we facilitate these matters and not become the final outcome owners of these, of these facilities? And this is one that fits in very well with the project, which is already ongoing, which is to connect Munson with the, the community of Sultana. And the joy and benefit of that is, of course, it includes a system. What we're able to do is use emergency funds to pay for some of the infrastructural backbones of the system on a larger scale. So, thank you to the, to the general population of California for your tax, tax contributions, which are helping to build the infrastructure for these systems, which will keep the cost down to a reasonable amount for the people who live in those communities, and that, and that, of course, is a major concern that we have. The ultimate goal here is to create a system between Sultana and Munson, and then later to connect it to a surface treatment facility, which is going to affect many other communities, including East Arosi, Arosi, Cutler, Seville, Getum, Cutler, or Seville, Munson and Sultana. So, that, that's the, the goal, and that would be, you know, we'd be completely out of that, and that would be a separate governance structure. The other thing I wanted to mention was that when we met with the state probably a month ago now or so, they were concerned about the shortage of water for the North County, for our tank program. Again, this is the temporary needs that we have, but using long-term objectives, what we, what they agreed to do was to fund a larger well. In other words, a well originally was going to be designed just to meet the immediate needs of the community of Munson. They've agreed to, for us to put in a larger well, so that we can use that to not have to truck water from Porterville up to North County in great distances, but that will also be a benefit then to the overall system in the future, because it will be a backup well, which will be necessary. So, again, we're trying to be smart about the use of temporary funds to, to deal with long-term solutions.
Supervisor Rashida?
Well, the thanks are going around. I really want to thank Self-Help, and particularly Maria Herrera and her leadership on putting these, these projects together, and without Self-Help and Maria, we would not be starting construction on the park in Plainview. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's, well, we had the same situation in Porterville, where we drilled a well with a grant to hopefully hook people up on the east side of Porterville, onto the Porterville water system, so we're still working on that too. But bring it back to the board for...
Mr. Chairman, I would be glad to move the, the item.
Moved by Supervisor Wordley. Seconded by Supervisor Rashida. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you. Okay, that concludes our portion of the open session with the board. Do we have need for closed session, counsel?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. I do need to make an announcement as to item B. It's, there was a mission on the published portion of the agenda. That item actually involves an existing matter, Sierra Club versus County of Tulare, which is case number two-four-nine-zero-six-one in the Tulare County Superior Court. You have items A through G on your board's closed session agenda. It's possible there may be an announcement.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our open session. Thank you.